I'm seven oh three again, I'm sorry.
You're doing okay.
Rich Warner, I'm from Dover, I'm the chairman. Rick Thorpe is the vice chairman from Wardsboro.
Dwight Borum, Wardsboro.
Laura, Dover.
Bill Anton, superintendent.
You can come back.
Barry Gerson, Wardsboro.
Peter.
Two hours minutes.
This video guy is Rich, he's waving. Mark?
Uh, Mark Schaubert, Dover.
I'm Lauren Harkwick, Deerfield Valley News.
Anita Raphael, Wardsboro.
Tammy Bates, Wardsboro.
Jennifer Finaldi, Wardsboro.
Okay, so first thing on our agenda is additions or deletions to the agenda. We had one, didn't we Bill? I gave my only agenda then. Rich.
Have a copy or go.
I have the one that Rick sent out.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, no, I amended it.
You amended it, okay.
Do you have the amended one Tammy?
Oh.
If you had the one, I sent it to you.
Here's the amended one. So the next thing on is members of the public, so we'll do that while we're getting copies of the agenda. Cause we've got a little more specific, the last one was done after the meeting.
Right, okay.
Do you have anything as public? Do you have anything as public? You gotta have something, you gotta take up enough time for you to get copies. One of you gotta come up with something.
What do you know about the...
Nothing.
Education Director quitting, people think it means Act forty-six is gonna be repealed. I heard that at least three times this week.
I think that Rebecca Holcomb was a fantastic and very caring, and I think the state's gonna have a great loss. She worked under both parties, I think she did a fantastic job, I think it was a tough job. I think the legislature and the governor and everybody put a lot of pressure to her, and I'm glad that she was able to hold up. And if we can get somebody equally as good, we'll be very fortunate.
Yeah.
And I just hope that the temporary person and the replacement are up to the job.
Great job.
Because it's June, the report has to come out, isn't it?
June first.
June first. So somebody's gonna like get in there and have to be hitting the ground running pretty hard. Tammy, I need mine back.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
She don't wanna get in front of the camera. I heard you got offered big bucks. To be on TV. So there's extras up here if anybody wants to come up. Okay, so we did members of the public. Anita asked a question, review and approve the minutes of the March nineteenth twenty eighteen meeting, can I get a motion? You can't move it Mark, sorry.
I was wondering why you're looking at me.
Okay, we have Barry made a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Dwight seconds it, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, abstentions.
Me.
Motion carries, the minutes are approved. Bill gave us a written cabinet report, and there is, I have a copy of it, if anybody would like it. Oh, Bill's got some here, can I get one? You should get him an email.
I did.
If anybody wants one, they're up here.
I got more.
Yeah, usually we just, since it's written, we don't go through it. If anybody has any questions or comments. Bill, nothing to highlight, I think Anita took away all the thunder with the secretary resigning.
Very thunderous, taken away.
It's the talk, people are asking questions about it.
Yeah, I would think, you're never gonna see it repealed, I mean, the time to repeal it would have been before all these towns voted. Cause if you repeal it, then what happens, you know? So, I think maybe there may be a postponement for a period of days or weeks, just if somebody new goes in to maybe get their feet under them, but I can't. You know, even that's tough.
Yeah, that's, I would not speculate on what's gonna happen.
There's a lot of staff up there that's very involved. You know, we met, myself and some officers from WCSU met with the Secretary of Education in the beginning of January. And she has a lot of very capable and very smart staff up there, working diligently too, so I think you're gonna see. I mean, I think that things are probably moving forward. So she put her flavor to it, and it'll just, the new person will have to kind of stamp it and get up to speed. But who knows? We're up to communications. Up to the survey results, did you see them?
No, I didn't see the updated, updated, the last one I saw was at the last meeting. We had four or five more surveys to add to that.
Right, so Matt put them together, what, uh...
I'm gonna scroll over here.
Put in some, Matt put them together, and Bill was gonna make copies.
Surveys?
Yeah.
I sent them out.
Oh, that's right, everybody should have gotten it in an email, we love emails.
I didn't think I got it.
Here's a colored copy of it, if anybody'd like to see it. We didn't make copies, so to pass out today.
We got Tammy, Tammy's pronounced.
You know, you can't make Tammy go on again, she's gonna be like, never coming to another meeting. It's two-sided, yeah, just make three or four.
Thanks Tammy.
Okay. So, the survey results almost balanced out, we had as many parents, a couple, I think it was Bill, two more parents than non-parents?
Yeah, it was very, very, fifty-three to fifty maybe?
Yeah, so it was really interesting that it was kind of an even grade. I don't think that, I don't believe that we had any major changes with just the five or six.
The six that we added from Dwight, not changed it.
There were the missing chads.
Yeah, the hanging chads. One of the things I did do though was, I went through and I think I emailed it to y'all. Oh shoot. Hey Mark, do me a favor, could you run that down and ask Tammy to copy these two? You can do it two-sided, so what I did do is, where it said ask a question, I actually went through and answered the questions, hoping like we used to do after the hearings, so that we could send this out to people or put it on there so that we get people to feel like, yeah, if I ask a question, you know, eventually I'll see a response. So, I emailed this to everybody too, a couple, I think, a little last week. And if not, hopefully Tammy can make some reports. So I wanted to get approval to the answers to question five. Again, it's just my thoughts and I answered them for me on behalf of the board, but if you folks wanna, you know, make any changes, I'm good with that too. And then, some of them I chose not to answer because I didn't think they were really a question, some of them were more like statements and it wasn't gonna be like a debate, it was just... And then, the other thing I wanted to have a discussion on is, how do we get question number, the answers out? Do we just put them on the blog, do we? Thank you. So, there's some copies of the new survey. If you wanna pass one around, do you want to take mine so you have one to look at, or do you have one?
No, but I'll see if Tammy can.
Okay, well you can steal mine for a minute. So the questions we had, some of the questions that we came up with, they ask a question, is number one, not having kids on buses for sixty minutes a day. And, you know, my response is, we hope not to have students ride that long on a bus, especially the younger students, however, the high school students may have to ride that long depending on where they go. I gotta think out of Wardsboro, the kids gotta ride half an hour there and half an hour back anyways, don't they?
Some do.
Yeah, cause what about like Snow Mountain? Hey Tammy, how long do the high school kids ride on the bus to school at Leland and Gray? Do you know roughly?
Fifteen to twenty minutes.
Oh, that's it?
Yes, really.
Okay, so their ride may be half an hour.
Twenty-five.
We're going over the answers to the questions, and not having kids on the bus for sixty minutes a day was one of the first questions asked. And we put, we hope not to have students ride that long, but the high school kids may have to ride that long depending on where they choose to go. If you want, you can pass those out too. So then, question number two is one principle or two, no intra-district busing. And my response is, we don't know how many principals, the superintendent will present a proposal to the board to review, unless we set a guardrail that determines ahead of time, but that could be handcuffing the superintendent's ability to present the best possible program to us. Not closing the Wardsboro School, not closing Wardsboro School, and I put, no school building can be closed without a vote of the town in which the school is in, and a super majority of the vote of the board. Why are you now talking about busing students between schools, didn't you make a promise that wouldn't happen? And I don't believe there ever was a promise not to transport students between schools, and I know there was a lot of discussion about transportation, and there'll be a lot more conversation in the near future. Number five was a long one, do you plan on teaching my children to read, therefore to think and comprehend and spell words? And I put, yes, I believe we now teach all children to read, Tammy, tell me if I'm wrong. Okay. To be able to do math, study history, geography, also carry on with good manners and thoughtfulness for others, and they learn home, to volunteer, to progress. So I think, parents are an integral part of the learning process, so we also need your help to teach your child. And then, the last part was, do you agree with me that computers are playthings and have no place in grammar school until a child is educated enough to know if what he's reading on the computer is true or false, scam or misleading? And again, this was me, so you guys tell me if you wanna put something different. I said, no one on the board or in education feels that computers are playthings, I don't believe, I ever met a educator or parent or board member that said computers are playthings, but I took a big liberty with that, so if somebody disagrees with me, I have no problem changing that.
Where is this?
Question five.
Question five.
Do you think computers are playthings as an educator, ma'am? Bill? So are we okay with that?
Yes.
Six, there was none, so I just did an NA. Seven, my concern is that parents are going to not like how something works in one school, and they will feel like they can switch schools as they see fit. I think it's very important that kids stay in school and the town they reside, unless they can prove an extenuating circumstance, just not agreeing with what one school does does not give you the right to send your child to the other school. And so, I just put, you know, we have to come up with a policy, I thought that number seven was gonna be really good for when we get to that section. You know, there's a comment, it'd be interesting though if that's a parent or a non-parent, just for context. But basically, you know, we're working on a policy and please, you know, keep in touch and we appreciate your thoughts. Eight was an NA, cause there was no questions. Nine, why are we not opposing this like other schools? And, you know, basically I felt like we said we would oppose it, but we wanted the voters to weigh in, and the voters weighed in and told us to move forward. Ten, is there a summary document of all the proposed changes, that would be very helpful in making ourselves more informed, so. I wrote, we don't have a summary document, and we're working on the structure of the new district, we'll have many more meetings about the new structure, and the superintendent will use the information that we have developed and proposed to the board to structure for the new district, which we will discuss in late summer, early fall. Number eleven is an NA. Twelve, is there an article or procedure describes how the consolidation can be dissolved if irreconcilable?
Excuse me?
Yep.
I'm sorry, on ten?
Yeah.
Would it be helpful to direct people to the blog site? I mean, just, you know, where, I think it might be, you know, that's where all the changes are.
That I think can just go right at the top of the thing.
As an introduction.
Yeah, maybe when we put it out, we could do that. And then the new website address. That was cool.
Barry.
So is there an article or procedure, an escape clause if you will? So number twelve, to dissolve the River Valley Unified School District, there'd have to be a vote in both towns, and both towns would have to vote in the affirmative. The River Valleys would be responsible, we pay any money that was given through grants to do our work, and we would then be subject to reorganization through the agency of education and the state board, which is kind of pretty much what we told people from, almost from day one.
Takes a long time for everybody to get there.
But it's good, I think these are good questions, because I mean, we tried to do everything we could to educate people, so. Thirteen, what can I do to help, the meetings are so hard to get to, but I'd love to be involved. So I really thought a here was like, you know, send us food. Please give us your feedback and stay informed, I mean, that's basically, and I think if we do that, again Laura, that paragraph or, you know, just an opening statement up top. Will Dover lose...
I do like the idea of send pizza.
There's no pizza in Wardsboro, is there? We can do it when we meet Dover. Fourteen, will Dover lose any educational programs? I bet you I know where this person's from. No one should lose any educational programs, I mean, we don't know exactly, but it was not the intent that we were gonna gut anything anywhere. Number sixteen was a little, and I don't know if that's really what they meant to write. Oh, I'm sorry, fifteen, fifteen was just an email address. Sixteen, sixteen is kinda, kinda interesting. Are you aware of how backwards, I'm not sure if that's the word they were looking for. Southern Mount School District's arrears and board administration, teacher, parent communications, and knowledge what others is actually doing, pathetic. So I just put, we're sorry to feel this way, but we have expended a lot of resources to reach out to all constituents in the two towns. Please make more suggestions and more specifics if you can. Seven, yep.
Again, you know, we may wanna be a little redundant on, you can find information at...
I'm not gonna type that, I was tired. Yes.
Is the question about what the board is doing to unification, or is the question about how the schools are functioning?
I don't know what the question here was, I think they just wanna let us know we're all pathetic.
He's very unhappy about everything.
Does that call for an invitation to attend an open house someday at one of the schools?
Well, I think, you know, I said, we're trying to make, reach out, please make suggestions and more specifics, because I really don't know what the question is. Are you aware, I mean... I don't know. One, when will we know about the results of the building surveys that are currently underway? And I put, should be early summer, right?
Yeah, early summer.
What are the monies that both schools have to reserve for building maintenance? We won't know until we finish out the FY twenty nineteen budget. Regardless of what financial buckets are called, does one school have more money in building reserves than the others? And I put, yes, it is unlikely we will both end up with the same exact amount of money. If we did, you should buy lottery tickets. One school should not have to pay for another school's disrepair, and if one school has more money than the other, each town should be able to vote on how the money is spent before the funds get commingled in July. And I just put, each town gets a vote at their school district meeting in March twenty nineteen.
That's it.
Not sure, so. Eighteen. How will it be determined which school a child attends? So on that one, I just put, we're working on the policy, hopefully early summer, and finish it after the board is able to decide where we send our kids. Nineteen, why is this not happening until twenty nineteen, when it was voted on in twenty seventeen? And I just put, so we'd have time for a thoughtful, productive process creating a new unified school district. And I gotta tell you folks, I could not imagine pulling this off in less than a year.
Jeez, I guess.
How will you monitor success of the new union of the schools, which I thought was a cool question? And I just put, by assessment, reports from our administrators, I mean, that's how we tell, determine things now. How does public transportation go into work? Dover has its own bus system, Wardsboro has West River Transportation, so it's kind of like a double-edged question, cause it's really not public transportation, it's school transportation. We will work on transportation policy after the board has decided the structure of the school district, it's really gonna be premature to spend a lot of time talking about transportation until we know what's gonna be where and what we need. Why are we not finding Act forty-six and suing the state like other towns and areas? And again, I put, the voters appeared to be all set, you know, they voted to approve this. If they voted to not approve it, then I think we all would be fighting. Twenty-three. Keep expenses down, I just put, okay. I mean, I think they were, I think it was a good point they made, I think it's something we can use, and that's kind of what we were looking for. You know, talks about the home of the gill feather, pays way to other events, we're rooted in community, I like to root it, cause I think the gill feather, isn't that a root vegetable? The Journey East program is the high school, you guys don't do Journey East in elementary school, do you?
They do come visit, once they've done their show, then they'll come and do a performance here as well.
And I don't know about keep corporate fingers out of local schools, I'm not sure what that meant. Twenty-four. Will program in Sappy Cut just to satisfy Act forty-six, forcing kids to be transported or parents to drive? Or will this new board commit to maintaining and improving education in school, which should have been the only goal of these mergers from the beginning? You know, it's still being discussed, we don't know exactly what it's all gonna be. Twenty-five, yep. I mean, I can't really speak to the programs or staff until we have a plan.
I mean, I guess that, will this board commit to maintaining and improving the education, the response of, this is still being discussed, I mean, we did commit to that, but...
And they're in the articles as well, right?
Yeah, I was taking it like, are you gonna cut programs or?
Yeah, okay.
So, I mean, I think almost this person, if you've cut anything, even if it's something that was gonna, Tammy's gonna get rid of something, because she's gonna get rid of it anyways, cause they're just, it's not, she's got a new program. You know, that doesn't mean that things aren't gonna improve, I mean, we've cut a lot of programs, we cut out of Wyndham Central's early education program, and I think that was an improvement for us. So. Twenty-five, how much expense is this projected to save? And again, we don't know, so that, I don't know if there'll be any savings, we can get, we do get to keep several grants, it would have been taken away if we did not form the unified district, and after the structure is decided, we can then prepare a budget, until we know what we're gonna have, it's hard to say. Twenty-six was an NA, twenty-seven is an NA, twenty-eight, I just put, see the answer to question number twenty-five, it talks about savings. Twenty-six, how will the results of the survey be published if? And then said, yeah, it is, and here it is. And then twenty-eight, how much will you, or thirty, how much will you save me? I don't know who you are, so I can't tell you how much I'm gonna save you. We may charge you more.
So, I can put them on the blog site.
Well, before you do that, let's not worry about what we're doing with them. Are they okay, is the board okay with them? I'd like to just get a motion approved to publish them. So we have a motion, do we have a second? Barry seconds it, is there any discussion? Hearing on all those in favor, say aye. Cool. Now, come to your question, Anita.
So I can post them on the blog site and then put notice in the bucket bill in the papers that if they're going to be available on the blog site. We can post them at the schools on bulletin boards, or we make them available in the office in print, so anybody can go to either one of the schools who wants to and pick up a copy. The principals might wanna include it in their newsletters, I'm not sure if it's something that fits in the formats you're using. We can do that, and I could ask if the bucket bill wants to print the entire thing, but they're kind of pinching pennies right now to cover their costs, so I don't know if they'll add that much, but it's possible I could...
You could also find out how much it would cost, and maybe we could sponsor it.
Sponsor it, I would, well, it would probably be the cost of a full-page ad, I think it's thirty bucks or something, but I'll find out.
Yeah.
Yeah, for thirty bucks. Does anybody have a problem if it's up to fifty dollars?
No.
I'll check it out.
My one suggestion would be though, and I don't know if I can, we can do this easily, is I'd like to see the question and then the answer underneath, so you don't have to look to... I just wasn't gonna type all the questions out, and I tried to...
Sure, I can format it that way. So those are some of the options, and I think once the link is out there, you know, I won't link it to the homepage, I'll link it specifically to those pages on the blog site with it unique URL, so people go right to that if that's all they want. And I'll put it on all the other pages, region, survey results, and then paired with that, I'll also put, it doesn't have to be over, continue your feedback, continue your questions.
And we'll answer them when you send it to us.
We'll answer them, questions and comments, so I can get that out there. Lauren did an excellent job after the last meeting of summarizing some of the survey results that we had discussed at the last meeting, so that did go to the Deerfield Valley News, and now that we have this information, if it's okay with y'all, I can re-summarize it, tidy it up, and get it to the reformer, who hasn't picked up any of this either. I did send you a little thing with...
Okay, hang on a sec, then, are we, you off questions now and answers?
Yeah.
Okay, let's just finish that up so we don't forget it. Would somebody like to make a motion approve up to fifty dollars to post this in the Bucketville News?
I'll make a motion to approve the fifty dollars to post the survey results in the Bucketville News.
And the questions?
And the questions and answers.
Okay, second? So we have a motion by Dwight and a second by Barry, is there any discussion? Hearing on all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so you're good to go with that.
Okay, so I sent you this, this is a copy of what went to the Bucketville News for the month of May.
Oh, May.
So they're gonna print that little blurb for May, and then by that time, well, the deadline is the tenth, so I can get all this survey stuff together for them as well, and ask them if that's a permissible option, if we pay them money. So the blog is up to date, only one person has emailed me to ask to be added to a mailing list, that was Jeremy Sharafu, y'all know. And there's been really no incoming on the emails or comments or anything like that, that I can report.
There is an email address in the questions too.
Yep.
So we should pick that one up.
Yep, yep, I'll get that. And then, other schools have still been getting their posters, I know that on the survey it indicated posters were the least popular, but I still feel there's a group of people out there that aren't always looking at their computer or their phone, or, so we might as well keep up with posters, it's not that hard to do, and everybody seems to cooperate in posting them. So, I have links all over the wardsborovermont.com website, and a little thing, it's at the top of the frequently asked questions page, what's going on with the school unification, it's on the homepage. So, on at least the Wardsboro Town website, that's always there and current, and Dover I guess has its links as well. And I guess Bill, you could post it on the WCSU website as well, the survey results, if you wanted to add that extra link somewhere, or put it in as a subset of minutes or something, I don't know.
Will you be creating a link on the blog site to the results?
Well, I'm just gonna put the results literally pasted on the blog, and then I'm also gonna put a copy in Google Drive, cause somebody prefers to go there, or they can take it off Google Drive and download it to their own computer or whatever if they want to.
Will it be linkable, or is it just gonna be documents?
Either way, I can do anything.
Well, I'm just saying, if you make a link, then...
You'll send the link?
That would be easy for you.
Good enough.
Thank you.
So, I guess that's it.
Any questions for Anita on our communications specialist?
So, people really wanted to be emailed, right, and it's, we really have two. Can we use the email from the schools as part of it?
We were working on that. We had discussed that at the last meeting, that it has to be an opt-in, it can't be an opt-out.
But they've already opted in to be part of the school email?
No, what we decided was like, the two principals can send something with the link to the parents,
All right.
and say, okay, I want...
Would you like to sign up?
Right, but we can't like just let them all sign, we can't just, they can't give us that information,
They can't.
and then us send them something and say, if you don't wanna be here, so we decided to make it an opt-in, because that's kind of privileged information the school has.
Right, so we'll do that, I'll grade that. At the beginning of the school year, do your parents all fill out like a fresh, how do we get in touch with you document? Yes. Cause that might be the time to add a question on there, would you like to be on the school board's email list as well? And that way, that's their opt-in, as they're filling out their new forms in September next year, they can add that on to their little form, and that might be an additional way to pick up any strays or any new people as well.
We'll put it on the poster and stuff, but...
Yeah, definitely will.
It's definitely, it's, I think it was a slippery slope, it's not a good thing to start just giving out emails.
Oh, totally.
Yeah.
Maybe it's like you could have checkmarks of, you know, you'd be included in which list, and you'd be included in like your email on different sites.
Right.
I mean, it gets confusing, it's probably hard enough to get people to return the medical form that's required with it.
Right, right.
But any thoughts you guys have too, you know, make sure you let us know. Thank you.
I guess that's it.
Okay, and perfect. That was it, you, your last question?
That was it.
Nobody else has any questions? Old business, survey, who's on the survey? Move around, or don't get anywhere? The top five questions to number four, remember question number four? What would a successful transition look like? And our homework last time, because we're talking about school stuff, and school's all about homework. How much homework can I pile on? We're all supposed to pick, y'all were supposed to take the top five ones that you thought would be important. What would a successful transition look like? And then this way, this is something that Bill and his team can use, utilize in assessments, and did we do our job? So, I would say ladies first, but it looks like if I go a couple rounds with her, I'm gonna lose, so I'll take volunteers first. I missed the last one.
Okay. I'm gonna have that answer for you in about two minutes.
Dwight, you got any comments?
We were just supposed to, I picked three. I didn't get five.
Okay, well, give me your three. Which number?
Uh, number three?
Using teachers and principals of all ages.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. I'm gonna ask a question. Am I on the wrong one?
Yeah, what would a successful transition look like?
Wait, wait. Am I on the wrong one? Three.
Question number four.
Nope, excuse me, hold on, hold on.
Okay, I tell you what, since it doesn't look like anybody did that. Anybody out there do it and look at it? Any thoughts?
Four.
You like number four?
Number four. Number five.
Happy and thriving kids.
Yeah.
And number five is equality, equity, and more opportunities.
Yeah. Number twenty-four.
Which is?
One where neither board is pulled down by this merger and cooperation, trust, and unity develops between teachers, students, parents, and administrators of each town.
Okay.
Number thirty. Improvements at both schools while maximizing the cost savings or having a joint board.
Is that the last one, or a few?
I'm almost there.
I'll think, Shannon, we have the oldest. That's my problem.
Some of these, okay. Um, here. So it's a toss-up between thirty-nine and forty.
We'll let you have them both.
Okay, well, thirty-nine is financial transparency from day one. Oh, actually, no, I'm not gonna do that. No loss of current programs. Well, yeah, I would. Thirty-nine. No loss of current programs. And forty is meetings with a bigger turnout from both schools to have open discussions.
So.
So all the ones that said no changes, I would not be in favor of prioritizing.
The thirty-nine player says that, yo, financial transparency, no loss of current programs. But that's cool.
Yeah, I, I view that as like not going down. It's like our kids not losing anything.
Yeah.
I agree with Laura on those. I think twenty-seven as well, though. That's like a big, it's been a hot button issue with everybody.
Which is?
Which is that we're both communities are respected and honored with respect. So it's important to them.
And what they want to keep separate. Okay. Anybody else out there while Dwight's?
Figuring out how.
I would say, I would like to find a way for us to keep the IB program. I mean, it's, uh, it's a significant, um, investment in professional development. Therefore, a significant resource, um, in the district. That should, you know, how do we make that available equitably to all the kids? I don't know. You know, if that's, it expands into both schools. Um, kids have a choice, but.
Okay, so, the, the issue is, is question number four is gonna be integral to our work tonight. And we're missing two board members. And we kinda just looked at this, so I'm gonna ask our administrator to send an email to every board member and to CC me, and, so go ahead through, Laura, you just read through it, and you picked your five or six. Go ahead and read, let's everybody review it, and everybody come up with your top five, rank number one through number five. Because I think that's gonna help us move forward, because we have to set some guardrails, and, and this kind of stuff could help us set some guardrails, but it has some discussion factor. So we'll, we'll still work on this.
Rank one through five?
Right.
Okay.
Number one is the one that you think is the most important, or the one that you think is best, and then we'll also have something that you could put your own thing in there. So how you, with your number one, you know, it may be different, but how you would see, if you came into school, how you would know that there was a, a successful transition?
So, two questions.
Yep.
On your question number four, of the answers that are currently there, rank one through five.
Yep.
One being the most important, five being the fifth most important. And then the second question is, add your own.
Yep.
Okay.
Since we're gonna be probably a month out before our next meeting, but we'll know soon, Nita, can we do that also on the, the blog site? Is there a way for people to respond and give us their, their top five?
From the existing answers?
Yes.
Sure.
Because I think that would be really cool if we could get input from the public, and I would really like to have one question, though, up top there, and it doesn't have to be their name, but I'd just like to know, are they a parent? Or are they a community member? Because it would just be kinda interesting. Everybody's gonna know what the board's feeling is, because we're the board. And Bill? Is that something maybe that we can ask?
So are they a parent or what?
Are they a parent or just a community member? And I shouldn't say just, but a parent versus community member. I think it would be interesting. Would it be too much to ask you and Matt to do the same with Bill? Kinda look at these? And just give us your thoughts as administrators, and then, you know, and then the second part of that question is, you know, i- if there's something that you have in your head that would be more specific, or you could put down, what would your, not picking from the list, but just, what would, if you walked in the building, what would you say to you this was a successful transition?
So the same question to Tammy, Matt, and myself.
Right.
Rank one through five and add an addition.
If there is one, maybe one of these is so important, you know, you would just say, yeah, I think number six nails it right on the head. Is that okay? So let's do that. Yes, sir?
You're asking whether they're parents or a member of the community. I'd also ask which community.
See.
It's more data for you.
Would it make a difference? So if, if, if people from one town or another town had a certain opinion. See, I kinda wanna, I was hoping to kinda keep that blind. Because I think parents and community members, it just, it gives a perspective. I would, i- if we see everything from the community members being about saving dollars, and everything from the parents about not having transportation between buildings, you know, I mean, I think that gives us some perspective. But if it's, I don't know, you guys, tell me.
Could also tell if, if, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Um, if, for example, one community, all the answers are about saving money versus the other community, now you realize you've got almost an education issue, educating them about it. It just gives you more, another data point.
One thing that would also tell us, too, is which community is playing along and which community needs more encouragement to play along.
I, I, see, I don't see it as playing along. I see it as concerns. I mean, you know.
You're not, are you?
Yeah.
My biggest concern is all the questions about the, the ability to transfer between schools, you know, and, and in my mind, you're asking the wrong question. Rather than asking which school they should, you can go to, you should be asking, how can our school, both schools be equal or the same? So maybe it can help to know which community is, is more interested in, in having the ability to ship between schools. Because we'll know, you know, maybe there's a reason for that.
You got any thoughts, sir? Because I know Lauren's got one.
I don't.
Bill?
No.
Anybody?
I've already submitted my answers, Mr. Chair.
That was quick.
Superintendent has them.
But they don't count, because he didn't send you a letter yet.
They count.
Okay. Straw poll. Do you folks wanna split it up by, well, let me ask you this. Do you even wanna, do you even wanna split it up between parent and community member?
I, I think if you're gonna ask, so I think you asked no questions, or you asked the same questions you asked me to the survey.
What we're doing is a survey within the survey, but it's gonna be a very small sample of respondents, so maybe these extra questions don't really matter. It's gonna be such a small sample that we're gonna get back.
So just, we don't care. It's just gonna be answer the questions one through five.
Yeah, I mean, at the end of the day, it's just, you know, it's an inclination. It's not, you know, everybody's voice will not be heard. People are still wondering when we're gonna tell them what's going on. We know we're videotaping it and have been for two years. Hello. So.
You know, and as Senator White has said several times, is just because there's a river there, just because we stuck a couple pins in the ground, does that make a big difference in what a community is, you know? Like, the Wardsbrow Dover Town Line, you know, the people on the, on the, 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 the wards, the Dover side of the Wardsbrow Town Line, are they Wardsbrow or are they Dover? You know, because they're far away from the Dover center. People on North Street in Wardsbrow feel more aligned with Dover. Where people, you know, maybe up on Duncan Road feel more aligned with, you know, Strad. So it's just, it's just an arbitrary pin, somebody stuck in the ground, because some guy over in England years ago wrote a grant out to somebody.
I mean, it can be helpful, but I would guess that, I, I do think it can be helpful to have that data, but it is gonna be a pretty small sample. And, you know, Rich, you have always articulated what I find to be the best data point, and that is attendance at meetings as an indicator of how well we're doing.
And Mark comes to every meeting, so I think we're doing well. We're entertaining him.
Mark's gonna keep us on.
He's the only one that's not getting paid to come here. Well, Tammy doesn't get paid. Yes.
Do you think it's worth scheduling one more joint info session before the end of the school year to sort of carry people over the summer?
I don't personally. I'm just gonna say, because we really don't have much to tell them. All, all we're gonna have to tell them is that Bill is gonna, and his staff, is gonna start working on a plan they're gonna present to us in late summer, early fall. And I'd rather put it, I'd rather, plus with the, the amount of snow days, with graduations, you know, even though they're not high school, but even a high school graduation, and with just the stuff staff needs to do, um, to get ready for next year, I think it would just be too difficult. I, I'd rather exert the efforts to when Bill is gonna present the final version, to making sure we get a lot of people out for that.
Here's the thought.
Yeah, no, and that's just mine, but I'm one of five others. Okay. Perfect. So we're gonna take care of that top five. Here's another one. I wish we had full boards for this. What does honoring the culture mean? Mark, I'm gonna pick on you first, because you're never shy. So people have been talking about honoring the culture, and that's something that came out of the, um, original study committee. And we never really kinda sat down and said, what does honoring the culture mean? So does that mean that in, when they first opened the school, they used to come here in horse and buggies? So I'm gonna tell a quick story. When my daughter was graduating, I had a meeting with the, the sixth grade parents, and my wife made me go, and I hated to go. And I get there, and they're all talking about graduation. They were ready to throw our administrator tar and feather her, because she did not reserve the town hall. And it was tradition that sixth grade graduation was done at the Dover Town Hall. So me being the way I am, I raised my hand, and I said, hey, guys, just so you know, it's only been the last two years we've graduated the Dover Town Hall. I said, all before then, the town hall wasn't even open, because it wasn't winterized, it didn't have the new foundation under it, and we always had graduation at the Dover ca- cafeteria, but it wasn't called that at that time. It was a gym.
Cafagematorium.
Cafagematorium. And I said, and then if you wanna talk about tradition, it's, you know, su rai, or su ra that is always sung. It hasn't been, you know, one of the parents who said, I wanna sing, because we wanna make this a traditional graduation, and this is tradition, or this is our culture. So what is, what is the word where we had, or the word honoring the culture? What does that mean to people? And what is that? How are we gonna play that into what we gotta give to Bill? Because we can't just give Bill some abstract thought, like, you know, we gotta give him some specifics. So what does honoring the culture mean? Because that's been brought up a lot.
Why don't we do another survey with that, and ask people to give us the top five cultural events at their school?
Well, if honoring the culture is just having events, that's easy. Tell us what top five events each school has, and we'll make sure they keep happening, you know? Sixth grade graduation. I, I think it's, I think it's gotta be a little bit bigger, broader for Bill, but.
Yep.
My guess, um, not being active in either school, um, is that at least from Dover's side, that it's the IB program.
And that really isn't culture, because that's only been around for a few years.
Yeah, I understand.
I mean, I, you know, excellence in education has been a culture in both schools for years. I've always said we achieved it differently, but we both took our test scores from somewhere in the basement and brought them way up to the top. But we did it differently. So could that, is that honoring the culture, you know? Continuous improvement. Consistent, contin- consistent continually high scores. Yes, I'm trying to deal, oh.
But, didn't this come from the vision statement or something like that? Was honoring the culture, as I recall, the issue was that Dover wanted to be, keep some Dover-ness, and Wardsbrow wanted to keep some Wardsbrow-ness.
That's my question.
And not get all mashed together into one thing.
What's Wardsbrow-ness and what's Dover-ness?
We chose, I think you chose honoring the culture because it was elastic enough.
Right. For when everybody would. I think asking somebody to put together a plan, using that, we gotta give them some, we gotta give them some help. Or, Bill?
So here's a, here's a definition.
Do you understand what honoring the culture means? I have no idea.
Here's a definition. Here's a definition. You ready?
Yep.
One definition.
Is this Webster's?
No.
Okay.
Uh, culture is the, is the characteristics and knowledge of a particular group of people. Encompassing language, religion, cuisine, social habitats, music, and arts. So.
So we make sure we s-
Characteristics and knowledge of a particular group of people. The way of life, the general customs. Social heritage of a group.
Wow.
Ball games.
Yeah, we could get in trouble for that one.
Ball games.
Pardon?
Ball games.
Little league.
Softball teams.
Soccer.
Customs, right?
All sports.
Probably an easier question to answer at a high school level than at a elementary school level.
Yeah, I mean, I, I really do think it's like, what are, what are, like, what are the community customs? Like, you know, like, what if we stopped doing it in Wardsbrow? I have no idea. What event in Wardsbrow if we stopped doing it with the kids?
Memorial Day.
What's that?
Memorial Day.
I was just gonna say that.
You know, the kids go, take the bus up to the cemetery. They bring flowers. We have Bill, um, Mr. Bills, Alan Bills come to play taps on the trumpet. All the kids sing songs or read a poem in every class, and they drop flowers, and then they walk down to the bridge, and then they walk to the town hall. So it's just something that, I know my kids did it when they were here fifteen years ago, so when you ask something like that, that's one thing that comes to mind.
It's the things that, you know, that make people feel like they recognize where they are. This is the place I know. We, no cha- I mean, I think, uh, things are going to change. So what are the things that are deeply important to people to not, you know, that are part of?
So it sounds like you just, you guys just made it really easy? I mean, do we just go to the administrators and ask them to come up with five or six things that you feel are?
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
I just wanna say that that was the very first thing that I said.
What's that?
Go out and survey the different events where, and such that.
Okay, uh, to me, the events are more like, that's more like the, the programming. The, the, it's more like.
Yes.
You know, like, having, I know that the school's required to do a memorial, something to honor for Memorial Day in the, in the statue. There's something you have to do, how you choose to do that. So.
But it's custom, it's customs. It's.
I went to a school not unlike this one in Connecticut, and the principal at that, all, all the classrooms were two grades, just like this and everything. And the principal was an ex-marine, and he instilled in the teachers and in every kid in that school, all sixty or seventy of us, um, physicality. So every aspect of our day and our year in school was about being active, being participatory, being competitive, having team spirit, having school spirit. It was like the overarching thing of everything we did, whether we were sitting at our desks or out in the playground or doing everything. And I attribute it to that man's vision of happy kids were active, they had a sense of team spirit, they had a sense of competitiveness, and, by the way, we learned some stuff. So I think that was the culture, and, and he created it. That's not something the board imposed. It was just his personality and his life experience. He had just come out of the Korean War, and, um, and, uh, so I think that's, when, when you talk about culture, that's what, that reminds me of, is that I could've gone to a different school where the culture was very bookish, you know, as opposed to very physically active.
So, how do we wanna move forward, folks?
I like the idea of going, having the administrators work with their staff, you know, their parent teacher groups, their communities, like having them come back to us and tell us, you know, like, what are the top ten? So that. We at least put a box around it. Customs.
So, you'll take care of that for us?
I got it.
Okay, so we'll have a response to that in our next meeting. So then, the next thing is confliction in the top three responses to question two. So, I looked at question two, and taking away honoring the culture, even though that's the second highest response, but your top three answers are what factors are most important to you to consider in preparing to start? So, the biggest one was expanding educational opportunities. The next one was honoring the culture, which I think can, again, if you're honoring the culture though, you're gonna make changes. And then finding cost savings. So, it kind of seems like those, two of those are in conflict. If you're gonna expand educational opportunity, it's not gonna save money. It's gonna cost money. So, how do we reconcile that? Because that's a good question. If I was the administrator, if I was Bill Antony, besides wondering why I picked Duke to go to the finals, I would be like, and I picked Duke to go to the finals, I picked Virginia to go out of ways. I would be saying, wow, what do they want me to do? They want me, they're giving me two different things that are kind of at opposite ends.
That sounds like a lack of understanding about how our education financing system works.
First thing is don't bet against Michigan.
Wasn't that?
Okay, seriously.
Wasn't, weren't those two ideas hatched long before, like, right at the first discussions of what school unification was? So, didn't somebody answer that question two years ago or three years ago, and Act forty-six ideas were first being discussed?
I, I will tell you, having been in the legislature when it was passed, that the legislature, the legislature legislators were clear, particularly the led, the education committees, that Act forty-six would not, was not about saving money, it was about increasing opportunity. And that's because of, really, the way the education finance system works, smaller schools have less opportunity. Because of, and, and so, you know, in these larger groupings, you know, hopefully, the hope is that we'll be able to reduce the inequities. So, the larger your pool of students, the more money you have to educate them. And that's not really what Brigham said. What Brigham said is, you know, all stu, we, this goes back to the waiting study, goes to all of this stuff.
That's what I'm saying.
It should cost more.
This was hatched way back.
What we've been saying is that we would like to, that this should provide expanded educational opportunities. We never talked about saving money. Now, saving money seems to have come in number three.
I mean, if we can expand, if we can expand opportunities without costing more money, I mean, that seems like it would be great.
It's always the goal, isn't it?
Right? Well, I mean, this is a unique opportunity to have that happen, right? So. Potentially.
I, I threw this out, that I thought there was, there was some confliction between these that would make it difficult.
Okay.
So, I don't know, if people don't feel it's that difficult, we can just glaze over it, but I just thought it was worthwhile, at least get out there and have a, and have a little bit of a discussion about it. Sure.
I think the answers to your honoring the culture will answer whether those three are in conflict.
So, we'll, we'll kind of join those two conversations.
You know what I mean? Depending on what comes back from the administrators of honoring the culture means, I think that'll sharpen your ability to see if there's conflict among those three.
Is everybody okay with that? We'll, let's, we'll do a little more research.
I'm okay with that, I just, you know, I would like, I would be hard pressed to think of, well, I guess we have to get into it. I'll be surprised if we are able to maintain, just maintain the quality and find significant savings. We may find some. But I'll be shocked if we are able to find significant savings.
I mean, again, going back to what Anita was saying, when the conversation started, I had on the study committee, was that if we're gonna offer more so that we give greater educational opportunities, that's in total contrast to saving money.
I, I mean, really, I think the only way to save significant, there's, there's a couple of ways that we can save significant dollars. You know, we can totally gut the programs, or we can shut a school. And we've made commitments to do neither of those things. We've said we won't do either of those things. And those are pretty much the only way.
Cool. Well, here's something. The guy behind the camera's not gonna like this. Evaluation of the cost of videotape the meetings. So, I was really, really shocked that in question number three, watching meetings on TV was the lowest. I thought we had the best show on Brattleboro. So.
You're averaging on YouTube about two hundred and sixty views.
On each of each meeting? That's really not that bad.
And that's the throw, that's the throw out the four thousand one hundred and sixty-four hits that you got on one particular meeting.
Which meeting was that?
Twelve, one, I, I don't know. I think maybe R V U S D was something else, because you got four thousand hits.
People in there are voters.
I was gonna say, that was, that was excellent. Yeah, me too. So, I just wanna throw this out there because one of the things is, you know, we did overrun our last thing, and those of you that attended the Wyndham Central Supervisory Union Board Reorganization meeting knows that the overruns were not easily swallowed. And is that something we wanna continue to do? I would advocate that we reevaluate this, we look at it, and we continue to, to do it at least through the end of, end of this process, maybe into the budget time, but it'd be something we look at as an overall strategy for, for communications and to get the word out, so.
Truly, anecdotal, in the last month, I mentioned the videotaping to five parents in Dover, and none of them knew that it was available. So, it might be something that go out in the newsletters.
It's been on every.
Well, no, she's, I'm, I'm, I mean the newsletters that go out to the parents.
Bill, can you see?
Got it.
I, I was really, to be really honest, I, I was really shocked on this, an email came back is the most, because I, since I've become unemployed, I gotta tell you, I spent so much time just looking at emails, and it's amazing, and I just, I wish, you know, if there was a way to, to like, delete half the people that send me emails.
Delete the people or the emails?
Other emails. The ability of them to send me an email. But, no, and I do, the one thing I like about the videotaping is, it's been really, really useful, is I did have one person say something to me that you said this, and I'm like, I don't believe I said that. And we were able to go back and look at it, and I said, see, that's not what I said. You know, pay more attention. So, it is good, I know Bill has used it in the past to get specifics when he's, he's, can't remember exactly where he was supposed to go with something. So, I, I do think it has value, because although Peter does great minutes, it's an exact recording of what happened, it's not somebody's version of it, so. So, I think, I mean, again, we've gotten in the budget for this year, maybe once River Valley forms, it's something we don't need, but I think everything we can do to put it out there. But again, since it just came out so low, I thought we'd do a disservice by at least not having the discussion. And I appreciate you getting those numbers for us, that's, that was very interesting.
That was just a quick, that's just on YouTube, that's not on the station.
Okay, but there's no way to tell on the station how many?
Not as easy.
Okay. And this is the second time I've got you to talk on camera.
I know.
I know, if I get three, do I get like a prize? Um, so, everybody good with that? Update on grant overrun payback from the Wyndham Central meeting. You were there, right Dwight?
No, the last page of the superintendent's report.
Yep. So, at the Wyndham Central meeting, Wyndham brought up the fact that their request of two thousand dollars for payback of the West River meeting was, and you can see this on TV.
You can see TV.
The, you know, when they looked at it per the amount of money per student that they would have to pay, it was, it was fairly substantial. So, they argued that they would like to see the West River group be done based on ADM of last year when the, the overruns occurred. So then, summary from Marboro, we, we mentioned that Marboro, Dover, Wardsboro had all been agreement that whatever, we were fine with however it went. Marboro amended the motion to include both the West River and the River Valley. And the amendment passed, and the motion passed pretty substantially, probably three, three to one. So, the numbers got adjusted, which really, a, a point that was made, which I, I think everybody kind of misses, is that it really doesn't matter what we pay, because next year, whatever's left, all goes in the pot anyways. So, it's, I don't think it's a big thing, but, so it changed a little bit. So, I think this, the office has sent out invoices to all the schools saying, pay us.
Yeah, it'll come with a regular fourth quarter invoices.
Bill, were you able to put up, get us like a poster or something big of the vision and mission?
Um, I'm working on that.
So.
Well, actually, I'm not supposed to work on that.
I'm supposed to work on that.
I know.
I've done nothing.
I was trying to cover for you.
That's okay.
We're tight.
That's okay.
Okay, so guardrails for the administrative plan. One of the things that was suggested is that we read the mission and vision statement looking at them through a student's eyes. So, one of the things I wanna do is get like a couple bigger posters of them, so we could have like one set maybe in here, if you can give us some space, and if Matt can give us some space in the meeting room, so it can always kind of be up in, in our face. I did get the mission statement laminated, but it's only on a regular sheet of paper, and I was hoping to have something a little bit bigger that we can see. So, that, we were gonna work on the guardrails for the administrative plan, but also that had to do with the top five to question number four. So, I'm gonna see if it's okay if we blow this off until next meeting. But next meeting, we have to get the guardrails done. There's no if, ands, or buts about it. Is everybody okay with that?
I'm okay with that.
No, it was moving on. Update on building studies.
All right, so, we voted last meeting to approve the criteria or land sets due to capital studies. I sent to both the Dover School and the Wardsboro School the proposal, which also included the.
Deposit.
The po, needing a deposit, and also to sign the agreement that you, that each, because each school had to follow through individually. And, I, did you guys, you guys able to do that?
We voted on tonight.
You did?
So, it's all approved, it's signed.
Okay.
And so, they'll just.
Send a check out?
Yeah.
Okay. And then tomorrow night, we'll do.
We'll approve tomorrow night.
Tomorrow night, I spoke with Tammy, and they'll have a check, I believe, tomorrow night for us, and we'll sign the agreement and send that out, which is great. So, I already have a tentative date for April thirtieth to, to start the study. Um, I don't know what that means, if we're gonna go to both schools, just so you know. But I think Monday, April thirtieth, will be the day that most likely we'll be starting the, the study going to both schools.
Excellent, yes.
Do you require any PR on that? Is that something you wanna put out there?
I don't think so. Do you want to PR that? Not really.
No, it's, yeah, it's a study of the infrastructure of the school to kind of get an idea how much money we should be budgeting every year.
I know it is, I just wondered if you wanted to tell people you were doing.
I mean, there, there was some interest in, in the town meeting, you know, people were asking about, you know, how are we gonna spend the money, and you know, what, what does each school need? So, I guess we could put something together.
We're gonna review it once we get the assessments back anyway.
Yeah, so, that's true too.
Wait till the results are?
Wait till the results, yeah.
That'll be, that'll be. Unless somebody knows, like, there's, you know, a very potted treasure somewhere in one of those yards.
Right.
That's the culture here in Wardsboro.
That's our culture.
We know where it is.
So, that's where we're at, so I think things are moving on. Um, the study should, the, the results should be completed by, I would guess, mid-May, something like that.
How's West River's doing, Bill?
Um, they went with a different firm, same thing, and they all got visited in March, and so, we're waiting. Leland and Greg got done in February, and then the other three buildings got done three weeks apart in March, and so, waiting back for that report. They got the idea from you, so thank you.
Excellent.
Does anybody else have any old business? What we decided was on the top five questions, number four, we're gonna do homework, and we're gonna rank them. And then, Bill's gonna send you a reminder. I'll send you what you have to.
Okay.
And I've already done, I've already done the work.
She just wants you to know.
I just want you to know.
She was that kid in school.
So, you've already told me what to say?
No, I didn't share.
No, but if I watch the video, I see what you said earlier. There's no other old business, then let's move to new business, review what are goals and a sample to review. So, I was hoping that we would be done with guardrails tonight, and then we could move on to goals. So, I think I'm gonna ask that we put that off. But one of the things is, I believe Bill sent everybody the continuous improvement plan or the SIP. Oh, you've got them with you.
I've got homework review packets for everybody.
Do you have sample goals too?
I do.
Okay, so, what we're gonna do is, after we get the guardrails, then we gotta give the administration goals. So, there's some sample goals he's gonna pass out, and there's also the continuous improvement plan, because as Rick may mention, isn't the continuous improvement plan really a goal? That's where we wanna be, so we should also look at where, where and what the two schools have and what Wyndham Central has. So, the first pack is writing SMART goals, and in the back is the, the plans? Yep. Improvement plans are in the back.
And in the middle are two examples of goals from two different school systems.
And so, can I ask a question?
You can ask several.
So, is it our intention that we would come back with this, or that we would do this during a regular board meeting?
Yeah, no, we're gonna do it during a regular board meeting, but let's come prepared. So, when we start talking about goals, not, we're all looking at each other.
Okay, so, I would just like to throw out a suggestion.
You can throw them all.
Having done some of this kind of stuff, despite best intentions, you know, some of this will be, be developed at the meeting. And so, perhaps having a meeting, a little longer scheduled meeting, perhaps with food, where, or even, you know, on. Saturday.
At a bar.
This is, not at a bar, I didn't say that. Anita said that, let the record show, that was Anita. The. Who was not elected, yet.
Okay, Laura.
Half price pizza Monday at West Wardsboro store, isn't it? Still?
I believe so.
So, hold that thought to the next meeting.
That we just, I mean, that, I mean, we just have, like, that is all we're doing.
Hold that thought, okay?
Holding that thought.
Cool. Okay, new business, legislative update, Laura.
So, the superintendent has provided you with a very comprehensive update. I will tell you, there's a lot of bills moving, there's a lot of concepts moving, which is, there's a lot of big concepts moving, which is a little bit concerning, given the loss of Secretary Volcom. H nine eleven, I would say, there's some good news and bad news. So, the bad news, I would say, H, H nine eleven came out of the House, what's that?
No, just, because not, everybody will know.
What?
What is?
What is H nine eleven?
Oh, H, H nine eleven is the education finance bill. Um, they came out of the, they actually started in the Ways and Means Committee, and then came over into the Education Committee. It incorporates a number of good income tax changes that we wanna make, based on the federal income tax changes, some changes around moderate, removing that income tax from moderate income social security recipients. And then it makes some changes to education finance. Uh, there are three pieces, three key pieces there. One is moving around the funds that actually are used for education, getting rid of the general fund transfer to the education fund and using, I think it was part of the sales, I'd have to go back in a little, but.
The sales tax, I think, goes all.
Yes, some of the rooms and meals, moving that in. And there were actually some fairly reasonable explanations given to me that made sense about why that might be a good thing to do in terms of our credit rating. There was another piece that looked at. There was another piece that looked at introducing an element, an income tax element into the residential taxpayers, not the non-residential and business taxpayers.
For the vote, for the way that, when you vote on a budget, it affects your...
Yes. And that, you know, there was, what folks wanted to do was lower property taxes, so they were able to lower property taxes by increasing income taxes. Some of the earlier versions of that also looked like, well, that's, and that's, so that's one piece, introducing that tax. Then, there's another mechanism in there for cost containment. Right now, we have the excess spending penalty, which we all know how that works. And there's Representative, Representative Scott Beck has been working on a cost containment mechanism for about a year and a half, two years. And we're at the point now where I just can't even talk to him about it anymore because I get so mad. It is a absolute disaster for rural districts. It doubles down on what I would say is the absolute mistaken notion that you can educate every student in the state of Vermont for the same dollars, and that we should. It was so bad in the first proposal that it, what it looked like was, if you, if you were spending more than the statewide average, the people that were going to pick up the cost for that in, were your lower income actually folks. It was, it was strange how it was working out. And so, you know, I actually asked the Chair of Ways and Means, am I reading this correctly, that in what are likely to be rural districts, that there's our poorer people that are going to pay the penalties for trying to provide inequitable education for their students? Yes. Okay, so that got changed a little bit. You're able to take the slope of this Beck mechanism and, you know, make it harsher or less harsh. So, it got tampered down, so it's much more gentle right now. Okay, so it doesn't look as scary or mean, but it is still in there. So, it passed, it passed the House. I voted against it. I spoke at length about it on the floor. It is in the Senate. The Senate, you know, we had been hearing the Senate didn't want it. We've, the Governor has said he's going to veto it. You know, we shall see. This cost containment measure, though, it is bad, bad juju. No good for us at all. So, that's the worst, that's the bad news. The good news is, we passed a new special education bill, which was passed unanimously. People felt really good about it. There's potential to see both an improvement in services and some potential cost savings. And, included in that was the waiting study, the infamous waiting study, and the funding for the waiting study, which be, which is really the missing link in terms of being able to ensure equity and achieve cost savings. So, and, you know, there are a number of other provisions that are in here. I would encourage people to look, to look at these, you know, I'll just really quickly, let's see. Da-da, this is ours. This is the Senate. So, the Senate is looking at changes to prohibiting tuition payments to out-of-state private schools.
That's come up before.
Yep. So, we'll see where that goes. There's a transition period there. I think it's really important to make sure that we have those words right. They're looking at prohibiting tuition payments to out-of-state private schools. There's an exception for independent schools in another state that are approved under the laws of the state that are either contiguous to Vermont, or in a state that pays publicly-funded tuition for its resident students to attend a public or approved independent school in Vermont. Change, some changes to the dual enrollment program. Portability of VSAC grants has gotten a lot of attention. This would remove the portability. Vermont is one of very few states that allows their students to take those grants anywhere. We do have some, a spot in there for the creation of an interstate school district, which is Sanford. Small schools grants, pre-k programs, not counted in the enrollment. What else is in here?
They'll go away next year anyways.
Yeah. Anything else that you think is really huge, Bill, besides the, so, and then I would say, as a part of the very significant conversation we've been having around school safety, there are, there's $4 million in school safety grants that is included in the capital budget. And there's another $1 million that's expected to be leveraged, that's for, to be used for the purposes of...
Infrastructure.
Infrastructure, not personnel, to secure buildings. So, things like window coverings, intercom systems, video systems, etc.
It's a one-to-one match.
One-to-one match with districts, so, I think that's it.
Did that pass?
That has not passed yet. It's passed the House. I would expect that that will pass the Senate, so, that was a key piece of what the Governor asked for.
Well, that is good that they're doing that study too. We ought to make sure, and part of that, we just ask him, like, security-wise, because then that may be, maybe able to leverage some grant money at a time.
Well, and just to follow up on that, so Lori Garland applied for a VISBIT grant to do an infrastructure security audit. That'll be happening in May on all of our buildings.
You know, the other place we always forget, and you got to include this in any of your studies and grants, is the central office too. Because, you know, sometimes you have students there, you have staff there.
Got a lot of angry people in there, so...
So, the only other thing I would just mention is that there is a pretty significant grant program that has just come out through USDA, grant and loan program through USDA around broadband. And I know a lot of our schools don't have, don't have cell, they don't, you know, the communities don't have good connections, so there could be some opportunities there for...
Well, that first, then, also looks really exciting, because that looks like...
Five-year.
Yeah, but, you know, it's the first time we've ever been given it, the timeline, so... Anything for Laura on legislative update? We just asked Laura to do this because there is a lot of things coming up, and if there was anything specific that, that we should be concerned about, I thought it'd be good.
Yeah, I mean, so...
Things change.
The 9/11, I think, is the ugliest thing facing this district.
How did it pass the House?
Ah...
Was it close, or was it party lines and...
It was pretty much party lines, I think.
It's pretty overwhelming.
No, I don't know if it was, actually. I don't know if it was. It actually, I think it passed a fair amount, because, you know, the whole premise is that we're cutting property taxes.
So, that's what Act 60 did too, just so you remember. Can you remind them, Act 60 was all about reducing property taxes.
I spoke so much that I've been invited to create a skit about how opposed I am to present at a state. You can, actually.
Cool.
I welcome that.
I think we can get all the people from the original 50 towns that we were told we were the only ones.
I did see you on TV, on the news.
What was I doing? Don't, don't get it, keep going, Mr. Trump.
So, reserves are the plan for what we will need. So, this we threw in there because of the reserve funds. There has been a change in the law on the reserve funds, so I just want to get it in there, so we kind of start thinking about it. And as we get to the reserve study, and then we see what we're going to need in the future, I kind of call it a placeholder. So, it'll move to old business, and it'll just kind of keep moving along with us for a little bit, till at least the reserve is done, and until legislature gets out of session. Just as, as an aside, one of the reasons Dover had a huge reserve for some years is with the change in education funding laws, with the change from the foundation formula to Act 60, we were able to bank some money because of some loopholes in the law. So, we ought to really be paying attention to the laws, and if there are some loopholes that allow us to bank some money, you know, we can do it again. Just in the old Act 60, your, your lower tax districts were going to increase a certain percentage every year.
Are you really going to provide the recipe?
Yeah, because Act 60 is long overdue. So, we were able to take advantage of that and put some money in the savings account. So, I think that's why we ought to just really pay attention, and Laura can keep us informed.
And once the studies come back, we'll know what we have to do.
And also what we need to, so...
The next logical step.
You guys got some grant money, because Jim is in addition to the original building, right?
Yeah.
So, was that, did you get money for that, or was that...
That was before me.
You know, I would also say, I think, the, sorry, two more things on legislative. So, the healthcare thing is going to come back this...
Statewide.
Statewide.
And...
Retirement was moving in that plan too, wasn't it?
Ah, that happened last year, current retirement, current retirement.
But I thought all retirement, under that 911 bill...
Mm-hmm, yes.
Comes into the health, into the ed fund.
Yes, yeah, I mean, it's, is not, it's a lot of like...
But, but all that other stuff that, it's like the Corrections High School and all that, move out.
Right.
So, it's kind of making the ed fund truly what it was meant to be, an ed fund.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, yes.
Well, I mean...
Imagine that.
Yeah. Imagine Peter Sherman, I will, this law will be self-destructive. We spend a dime on anything other than payments to supervisory unions and school districts. I wish we had video back then.
I would also say, I think the Governor has been outspoken about his desire to not see any property tax increases this year. And given the increases that had to happen because of the deal that was made at the veto session, and all the incentives that are being paid, you know, it's, you know, school boards came in with much lower than expected budgets, but I don't think it's, I don't think it's outside of the realm of possibility to see a proposal come out and say, you know, those budgets that you just passed, you're going to have to cut more money out of them.
Those will just tax us more.
Right. But, we'll see.
So, the shift for 911, what year is this for?
This year.
You were talking about this year?
Yeah. Yeah, and there's also like a retroactive, like, let's look back on some of the income things. I mean, it's amazing. It is an amazing...
But, that one hasn't gotten any traction anywhere.
911?
Yeah.
It's moved out of the House, it's been voted out of the House.
Right, but I thought it was so against what the Senate wanted.
Well, I don't know. The Governor has said he'll veto it.
Why is he going to veto it?
Because it raises an income tax.
You're just moving it from one place to another. It was a property tax, now it's a income tax.
They're fine with just cutting.
Not raising.
Yes. Just cutting property taxes.
Remember, Act 60 also, that's, they bumped the, the sales tax up 1% as a temporary measure, and it was supposed to sunset.
Yeah, right.
So, part of Act 60 was that 1% in sunset, and that went into the ed fund too, and, you know, the, and then they increased, it used to be your minimum tax for a corporation, even if you didn't make money, was $100, and then it went to 250. And there's a whole bunch of things, taxes, little things that increased. And if you look at it, it's so funny, like, increase the communications tax by .0051%, and that raises $2 million, and then we add that to the ed fund, and it was...
You know, there's ratios, there's all kinds of things that the administration proposed, which are, which double down on the notion that every kid is educated in an equally-sized school, in an equally-sized community, in an equally, you know, equidistant, routes traveled, you know, geography, wealth, all are the same, which of course, we know is not true.
Not even close.
No. So, I think...
And that's also...
Bears careful watching.
That Vermont is flat.
Vermont's flat. Well, it is up in Chittenden County, so...
Well, that's where it's important.
Yeah.
So, I think we beat everything up on the agenda. We got a lot of homework to do, so I think we can get out early. I want to skip around a little bit, I want to go to the next meeting. So, April 16th, we're supposed to meet. That's the beginning of school vacation. I know that the Dover principal isn't around. I know that...
Tammy's not around.
Tammy's not around.
Tammy's not around. Carrie can't make it.
I can't make it.
You can't make it. Is it worthwhile having a meeting? Four of us couldn't make it.
Yeah, you can't 100%. I don't think, I don't think...
Okay, so...
It's not a holiday, or...
It's April vacation.
It's a vacation, not a holiday.
I just didn't want to step on any more holidays.
That's right, that's right. Tax Day.
Patriot's Day.
Is it Patriot's Day?
Yeah, isn't it?
It might be, I don't know.
The 17th, it's Tax Day this year.
17th. When's Patriot, when's the big Boston Marathon?
That's 15th, isn't it?
Sunday, the 15th?
That's a Sunday. Doesn't, do they run it on a Sunday?
I thought it was a Monday.
Oh, they're going to run it, no, they do run it on Monday, right.
Yeah, and then there's baseball at noon or 11:30. 11:00, it's a great game.
Right, right.
You won one year, didn't you?
Yeah, it was awesome.
To be able to go to a game that early is awesome. So, what do we want to do, folks?
What can we do?
Well, we can, we either don't have the meeting, or we...
Or push it a week.
We could push it off a week.
Well, since we have a lot of things to do, for someone who's not going to be attending the next meeting to say that, but...
Can you make the week after?
I can make the week after.
Can you make the week?
I can do the week after.
Laura, can you make the week after?
23rd.
Okay, let's do it the 23rd. Peter, what does that do to you? Um, it does me... It doesn't really do anything to me. So, you can, oh, you make it?
The 17th is Tax Day because of Patriot's Day.
My parents' anniversary.
Mr. TV guy, is that a good date?
With Long Island, see them?
You can make that? Okay. Cool, 23rd. So, let's plan the 23rd, or no, do we?
Oh, okay.
Okay.
It's in the Buckettville that came out, but we'll just post posters or something.
Yeah, we'll just have to let everybody know.
Okay, don't.
Okay. So, the 23rd, Dover School, 7:00 PM. I will make sure we have pizzas.
Excellent.
23rd, 7:00 PM.
You guys got to bring your own beer.
We're not drinking beer at the school. We're on TV.
Do you have to do it? Because you don't have a meeting before.
Oh, do you guys want to start a little earlier, because we don't have the Dover meeting?
Yes, that'd be nice.
6:00 or 6:30?
That'll buy that time that Laura was talking about.
6?
6 is too busy.
Is that too early for you?
You're in Dover anyways.
In Dover anyway, it doesn't matter.
You should be in Dover anyways.
All right. 6 is fine.
6. Can you make it?
No, 6 is fine, yeah.
Okay, let's plan on 6. Cool, we'll have pizza.
Bring a receipt for the pizza, because we have a grant.
The face for pizza? Why have been holding that on a sandbag?
I just, the grant, we've got the rules, we're fine.
Bill, are you around on the 16th?
I am around.
Are you around?
The three of us.
We'll do our meeting. So, what's happening is, Rick and I and Bill meet the week before the meeting to get the agenda ready, and to get everything we want prepared, so that we're more prepared when we come to a meeting. It's just an informal learning group, so that we can run a better, a better school board meeting.
A non-professional learning group.
Yes. Bill makes it, brings in professionals.
Exactly.
Bill keeps us on track. So, that being said, I have, do have an executive session item on contracts. So we're going to meet on the 23rd. There will be pizza. Try to get some juice or something too. And hopefully let everybody know, because it's, hopefully we can work on those questions and we can get going on the guardrails. So it'd be nice to have a bunch of people. And I will entertain a motion to move into an executive session for contractual. But what we're going to do is I'm going to move the board to another room.
So move.
What?
We're going to move to another room.
Okay.
So Rick made a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I'm going to give it to Laura. Ladies, all those in favor say aye.
You got to be quick to do that.
Okay, let's move. We'll be right back.
Will you have a decision?
I don't, no.
Okay.
Please email me. Thanks.
November 6.
8:45.
That's a lot of views.
So this, just a quick breakdown of some of the things, but for some reason, November 6th, but, what? I thought it was a 9.
1 view.
Is that it?
Yeah, this is the meeting.
So, but this one's pretty good too, the 2-5 meeting, 271.
Yeah.
What was that when we were discussing the, the annual meeting?
Oh, I don't know.
Ready for this weekend?
Yeah, by unanimous consent.
Isn't it zero?
So, are you ready, sir?
Yeah.
Are you all good? Okay, so we came out by unanimous consent and Bill's going to keep us informed on the contractual issue and check with the attorney.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Very move to adjourn, Rick seconded it, everybody's in favor, we're gone.
Good job.